Thank you. Good evening, everybody. And it's auspicious April 15th, 2014. I am welcoming you all to the Village of New Poles Planning Board meeting. It is now 7:01 or 2. My name is Maurice White and I'm the Chair of the Village Planning Board. Members present this evening are Michael Zerler, Liz Harsho, and John Litcham. Our Secretary is Brogan Rose Hodan. And in the audience, we have our Village Board Liaison Tom Rocco and our Planner Brenda White. Thank you all for being here. I call the meeting to order. We have an agenda with three items and some administrative work. And I'm going to propose that we handle this in the exact opposite order of what's here. So what I'd like to do is to continue the public, reopen the public hearing for PB 1307. So may I have a motion to open the public?
So move.
Second?
Second.
If you're all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So is there anybody here to speak on the change in number of bedrooms for 46 Church Street? PB 1307. Hearing no one, seeing no one, I would like to have a motion to continue this public hearing until... What do we have here? Would be the 20th of May, would be a month? Would be two more weekends? So we'll continue it until May 20th is what I would suggest. And if Mr. Johnson neither shows up or applies to the ZBA as he's, as we thought he was gonna do, we will send him a letter saying that we can't approve this in the form that it's submitted and move on. So may I have a motion to continue this meeting, this public hearing until Tuesday, May 20th, 2014? Second please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next item is a public hearing for Woodland Pond's sunrooms on cottages. Jim, would you come up, please? So, may I have a motion to open the public hearing? So move. Second? That is Mr. Zerler. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so are there any people who would like to speak to this item this evening in the public, from the public? You didn't bring any fans?
No one with you, no? They're all welcome.
Okay. May I have a motion then to close the public hearing for this item?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Mr. Zerler, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a draft resolution from our attorney for this. We did receive a no-county-impact notice from the county as a result of their review of this. And this was properly noticed. So, does anybody have any comments or suggestions about the draft resolution set around? Mr. Litcham?
No. All seems pretty clear.
Ms. Harsho?
No.
Mr. Zerler already. Corrected, no, really, right, yeah, thank you. Okay, so I will now read a, I would make this motion to resolve by the Village of New Poles Planning Board that the proposed site plan and special permit amendment is shown on a drawing set for cottages 3, 4, and this is not right. What are the cottage numbers?
It's 1, is it 123?
There are four, aren't there?
120, yes, it's 3, 4, and 123.
Oh, that is right then, okay. I thought there were four.
No, no, there's three altogether.
I withdraw my criticism of mine here, okay. So picking it up from there, drawing, it's shown on a drawing set for cottages 3, 4, and 123, prepared by Sincox Associates dated July 28th, 13, August 20th, 2013, and September 15th, 2013. This hereby approved, subject to payment of all fees and escrow. May I have a second for that, please?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so... And we did note that Mr. Stephens is absent. I didn't note that, but Mr. Stephens is absent. Mr. Stephens is... We just didn't want to vote, okay. So, I move... Michael, I'm sorry, you seconded that one? Okay, so you probably have this, but you can do it for me with that. That's all said. So, I think we're done. We will, we have to check with our bookkeeping to make sure that we're up to date with all the money and then you've paid all your fees and escrows. And after that, we'll give you a copy of the resolution. And the building department will get that as well, and you'll be very good.
Okay, very good. So the next step will be?
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay.
Have you got a full building, building progress, have some knowledge of what you're doing?
After we figure out that we have all the money that we can get from you, or have given, and then you will have the resolution, copy of the resolution, and the building department will be notified.
Yes.
And then you can work with that.
Go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, you're welcome.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the first item on the agenda. And that is a pre-application review for a site plan approval. It is our number PB 1403. And it's on the site that we fondly know as Yanni's Restaurant, 51 Main Street. Mr. Lower and friends, come on.
I'm the owner of the Building of the Neatness Group.
How are you?
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
How you doing?
So you don't make my falafel when I go there?
No, no, I don't worry.
Okay. So, we have received small copies of this, of the drawings. And so the normal procedure is something like, show us what you got. We'll give you our informal reaction individually. We will not take action. Anything we say is not binding and all that stuff, and, okay. And we'd like to keep it kind of brief, but that's the most, make sure you get what you need from us.
Well, you're familiar with the site, I guess, I have a...
I am. This is the back of the site, the adjacent building. Nacco sushi. That's it. Building, gas station, back of the existing addition was done on the back of Yanni, possibly as part of their last application, but it wasn't completed. Presently, the roof is drained into this addition, so it's been, it's not in great shape.
In what?
Yeah. It's kind of used for storage, I guess. So the present height, the proposal is to do a second floor and a third floor apartment for the owner. Because he has enough on his plate. I mean, I'm gonna be working there, I don't have, you know, the whole time. So for me, I live in High Falls. Right now, I'd like to have the apartment on the third floor where, in the middle of the day, go up there, take a nap for an hour, come back down, go back to work.
You know, I owned a restaurant in Huntington for less than a year. And an apartment above the restaurant, not a good idea.
I understand, you know, but you're not...
That's not binding. You can do whatever you want.
No, for me, it's, I don't have anyone else I would get to trust, how, how do you work?
I bet, I know the drill, yeah.
So this is, this is the basement level where there's presently kitchen. The proposal is to put the full kitchen downstairs, because if you've been there, the kitchen's very tight.
Downstairs below the first floor?
Ah, yes. And it's walkout in the back, so it's access to the apartment. And the first and the second would be the restaurant. The third would be a separate, two entrances to be the apartment. The owner wants to set it back from Main Street, so that's, you know, that's what he's proposing. Yes, the upper floor is set back. The third floor is, you know, I've stood up, you know, further up the hill on Main Street and looked down towards the cliff, and, you know, I see, I have the five poles there, so I see where the second floor would be. And then wherever the third floor would be, it'll block out the cliff, so. I wanna set it back, because I don't want to ruin the whole scene. The building's sticking out and...
But then you'll miss the view of Fat Pots. Is that gonna be okay?
What do you mean?
Won't be able to see Fat Pots from the...
Don't worry, it's a piece of place across the street. It's all right. Jordan's, yeah. Let's try to make that. So the view now, this is the neck of, the next building, which is kind of two and a half. I don't know what they have, but it's a tall two. Three stories here on the streets, so. And there's kind of this wall space between the two. It's a triangular portion of the lots. Okay, so here, yeah. So I sent you the sketches, and I can probably pull them up on here, but... That one thing is the elevation, the other is the plan. So first, this is the basement level. Existing is three spots like this behind the Mediterranean Cafe building, okay? And the last proposal had the spots back here, essentially, two spots.
The last proposal?
Uh, 2004, which, since it wasn't obstructed, I, so. I guess our guidance that we need is, obviously, it doesn't have enough parking now. It's not that big an increase. It was already approved for the second floor increase. We're a little larger than that. So just to hear your comments on that. So the kitchen access, there's a covered area, and then there's the door to the kitchen, and then there's a stair up, which, and I know this is beyond planning board perhaps, but it just shows, I thought it's good to show what we're proposing. So the stair comes up to kind of a prep area where the existing Yanni entrance is now, or the existing, was. So seating downstairs, right now, it's choked in here with the bathroom. We're kind of pushing that back a little. And as in the last proposal, during the deck on the back for seating, it's small. It's under, it's 400, it's under 400 feet. And this is the lot continuing on the back, so. The lot is point, I forget, it's small, it's an undersized area. So the second floor, the restaurant, the stair goes up to the second floor. It's basically open space. Where are we looking at the deck back there? Yes, yes, I'm sorry, there's no, yeah, deck on the second floor, not the first floor. First floor isn't closed. And then the apartment's being, I don't know if you guys can see this, set back here. So this'll be a deck, the apartment starts set back from the Main Street. And then basically, that's whatever it is with two needs to be, so it's a bedroom, a kitchen, whatever, just...
What are the two needs of it?
Uh, one is on the back here, it's an enclosed stair down. And the other one is entered here, so it's another stair, but it's entered building code distance from this stair.
Are they both within the actual structure of the building?
Yes, they're both enclosed. And the last proposal wasn't actually to code to be exterior within 10 feet of the building, but maybe that was the previous code, so we had to enclose them. I didn't really want to. Wanted to leave maybe one open to the deck, but we have to. Because if you're within 10 feet of the lot line, you have to, I mean, you can't have an exit stair, which makes sense if there's a fire 10 feet away. So, one, one thing, the building is in bad shape. So, your dad is in steel installations? So we're just gonna take it down and do a... Take it to the ground? Yeah, and do a better quality building.
Take out the, the concrete basement?
Yeah.
Um, I'm planning maybe, like, now I'm gonna engineer to inspect that foundation that's there. In fact, the work on that foundation, great, if not, then everything's coming down.
Yeah. I mean, definitely that new concrete they did in the addition, we probably keep that, because that's good quality. The rest is kind of a block that's, we have to check in. So that's, that's the proposal. The square footage, the basement, I didn't label this, but it's about, well, the kitchen. The area upstairs for the restaurant is about 1,300 at this point, and a 400 deck.
Is that both first and second floor?
That's the first floor. And the second floor, I'm sorry, no deck on the first floor. We had a deck, I keep saying. Maybe, yeah, yeah, enclosed, it's across that. Okay, enclosed, so a total of 17 on the first floor. And then the upstairs is, I believe, 13 and 4, so it's a deck.
So how many seats are you...
Uh, we haven't looked at seats yet, but this space is 30 feet at Main Street. It's, you know, what is it here? 7, 8, 16, maybe 18, 18 on the back, so we have to look at the seating.
The code, as you probably know, is dependent upon the number of tables?
Yeah, I think it's three seats per car. I mean, we're, yeah, we're not...
Nearly at 150 cars, so.
Yeah, that's what it was, that's what it is. We're increasing it, but I guess, what are you, what are you talking about, what you want to do, and what do you want to do? I mean, like, now, first floor is more of keeping Yanni's menu. If you've gone to Yanni before, it's just basically a fast food menu. And then on the second floor, more of the fine dining, where, you know, there's no Greek restaurant from the city to Albany that's gonna, has fine Greek dining. You know, so it's just gyros and souvlaki, espagnol copita, ciprappas. I wanna do, you know, I wanna do, you know, charco grilled lamb chops, charco grilled fish, you know, octopus, roasted chicken with lemon potatoes, you know, the actual Greek menu. So, I'm, that's gonna be more on the second floor. I'm guessing somewhere between 60 seats, if I could squeeze it in. Total on the second floor, on the first floor, about maybe probably the same?
60, 6, 0?
Yeah, maybe 100 seats total. If that's max, that's pushing it.
Ten Greek people.
Yeah. We haven't gotten that far to actually what you're asking, yeah.
Okay.
But, so, fine dining, quality, something to enhance the, you're thinking of enhancement of the community? That's what I'm hearing, so. Oh yeah, I know that parking is a problem. Now, I'm originally from Brooklyn. I moved up here just over a year ago, and, you know, for me, this doesn't look like a problem. I know you guys have been up here your whole lives, it's a problem.
I grew up in Brooklyn.
Oh, all right. So here, you know, if I had this menu, I have this restaurant in New Poles. People that are not from New Poles, from all over, you know, Oyster County, they're just county, Orange County, they'll all come here, you know, they'll come to my restaurant, now they're in New Poles. Now, now they could go spend their money at my place, and then at this bar, and, you know, dessert at this place. It's just something to attract, you know, more money into the town. And, you know, if they have to drive, you know, an extra block or two down, you know, to find a spot, it's all right, they're in New Poles. Now, you know, they gotta walk from their parking spot to my restaurant. As they're walking, they're passing other businesses, something might catch their eyes, they're window shopping.
In general, I would say that most of us are not that concerned about your customers finding a place to park. Although, that would be a good thing for you, a lot of good business. But we care about the impact on the other businesses that are there, and the parking that they have, and the extra demand on that parking, which is already kind of limited. But, well, after you come back with seats and a real plan, we'll be happy to look at what the parking is. We have more flexibility than we had a year ago. In that we, we can now use the code requirements as guidelines. But we have to have a good reason for that. And the good reason will be some mitigating factors like nearby municipal parking, nearby other things. You can hire a traffic consultant to say that there's, at this hour, you have as much parking on the streets, and it's no problem, and, you know, that we can do stuff. But that, I see, is gonna be a barrier.
I understand.
If, you can, you can get a variance also, you can go to ZBA, I'm sure Richard can help, Richard Ed, Brenda can help you figure out what your approaches can be. You can use ZBA, you can, you can try to do it with us first, and, but... Anybody else have any questions?
I do.
Yes?
Looking at these diagrams, I don't have any idea what the existing building looks like. In other words, what's the existing building's footprint relative to what you have on these sketches?
Yep.
Because it, to me, it looks like what you have, starting with the basement, you say that you have it's gonna be undercover.
Okay, this is the existing building plan. This is from the previous submittal, it's a Xerox from that. So it's cut off on Main Street, and you can get these two lines connect. This is that addition that was done, it's about 360, 400 feet. A stair, concrete was put in. So I'm gonna overlay this to show you where we are in terms, in compared to that.
Okay.
One thing we're proposing, the actual property line is beyond, this is a little off from this, but...
I get the idea, yeah.
The actual property line is beyond the building face, so if we're gonna tear it down, we'll probably go to zero lot line, which you're allowed to do. It makes sense, because it's such a small space. So this, this piece is the same, this is the same.
So that whole overhang thing is going to poke out from the building line next door? In other words, the existing building of Yanni's, if you allow me to call, still call it that, cuts off right with the adjoining owner's building?
Well, yes and no, because this stairs were, are proposed here, and they're installed partially. There's a concrete, this piece is installed, so we're, we're doing those stairs by code. So that, we're, we're, yes, we're going over a little more, we're overhanging. But really, those weren't, you couldn't do that today. You can't have an open stair next to a lot line. So those would have had to be enclosed if we came back, so, yes, it's a little further, yeah.
Who owns that alleyway?
Uh, this guy, that drain, which we're very happy about.
Yes. And from your drawing, I'm sorry, Liz, you have more?
Well, uh, yes, I do. So you're gonna have it open on, on the basement part?
Right.
And it's gonna be an overhang? So in the overhang at the basement level, what is gonna be there?
Uh, that would be...
Is it gonna, it's gonna be open?
Yeah, open, yeah. The kitchen door is there, so if they had any...
And then that little finger pointing out is actually the kitchen?
Uh, this finger here?
Yeah.
That's the stairways.
Okay.
Uh, one is the egress, you need two from the apartment, so that's really tough on us. And then one from the restaurant in the back. Because we have the interior stair, but then there's a second. So this is actually a double flipping, flip back stair, and this one is a single from the apartment.
Okay. And then, once you get to the first floor, second floor, and third floor, the building would actually extend all the way out to the end of the stairway?
The first floor extends out. The second floor is a deck, so it's open. And then the third floor is set back, I think.
Set back in the front?
Set back in the front, yes, it was set back in the back. It is now over, yes, so two are over and two are open.
So it'll be, it'll be, on the first floor, it'll be building, on the second floor, it'll be deck, and on the third floor, it'll be building?
Yes.
So it'll be like covered deck? Okay, so for all intents and purposes, it's gonna be building?
Yeah, you could, yes.
All the way to there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Richard, the drawing that you showed us of the...
Yeah, this is one concept. You wanna talk about the street?
What I wanted is just an idea of the, the impact on Mr. Mediterranean. You, is he gonna only see your building?
No, those buildings, that's, that doesn't, let me just go back to this. The Mediterranean, we're not going any further than we were.
We're going up.
We're going up, but there's seating's on the first floor, so, I mean, our front wall...
But there are windows all along the side.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. You mean the Mediterranean, yes, we, we, yeah, I'm sorry, I was thinking Catherine. Um, yes, there are four windows up there, I could go to those, I think, through and through.
Right, I think that's right.
I hear they are, yeah, this is a shot. Yeah. And there's the alley, which is whatever it is, 6 to 10 feet, 860.
Right now, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they would be locked.
And does he have an apartment up there too? What, what, what is that that's, it looks like it's on top of?
This, this thing?
Yeah.
That's the sign. That's actually, that's actually the big traffic sign.
Says Gardner, uh, Rockingham.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah, yeah, I know, I was like, also, if you have any questions.
That's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I didn't remember seeing it, but now I see it.
There's also a monstrous power pole there.
Yes, there is.
Which, I was looking at, because like, you don't even see this stuff.
I see it.
I was looking at the phone, like, why would you set up a power pole? Like you're sending it back.
Okay, and the, and the drawing on the computer, it's hard to see that.
Right, because it was of like, so we, I was looking at, this was the first sketch of, would you like, better, you know, take the third floor deck and have a little pergola there? You know, you want a really brief modern, which we're not gonna do, you know, this, not quite fitting in New Poles, but, you know. So we're, we're not, we're just kind of looking at ideas. This one, thinking of, because the steel business, maybe do a steel awning, you know, with decorative glass or hand steel, some sort of tape that, play that into it, you know? That's what I was thinking, you get the scale, which you can't see at all.
And what were you saying about being set back from Main Street further?
Uh, that's the top, the, yeah, the top. Yeah, I think because this is basically a high two, we're blocking all of it, very much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The second floor achieves that.
So having it as you have it represented in there?
Right.
You don't intend to have any outdoor seating?
In front?
In front.
Uh, you mean right here as they do now?
Right.
Uh, well, I'm thinking, you were saying no, but, I mean, having done there, I would say, but it probably no is the answer. For me, I'm not a fan of sitting out eating food right where cars are trying to go. All the stairs come right onto the plates, and I'm not a fan of that at all. I would, when I look at it, I'd say, have this be kind of an open window. This could retract, you could do that side open with a door, but that's me, so I have to listen to what the owner... You know, so this could, here, I mean, I do like dying on the street, that's me, so, so, yeah.
But you don't wanna consider that, just, when you...
If you guys...
It's something that we won't know about in contact, just because there's, you know, certain conditions that you can do.
Okay, I mean, if you feel it's an enhancement to the community, you'd definitely consider it, but you're not considering it.
I know, I...
Okay, then that's...
I say, I agree that it is, it's really lousy to be right next to...
Well, it's also very tight there.
Yeah. And, you know, it increases the danger for pedestrians.
Yeah. Kids flying out the table or something. So you're not, Mediterranean, they're kind of raised up.
They are raised up.
And they're set up against that. Yeah, we don't have that luxury, the building, yeah, so.
Okay.
So that's, that's...
Do you, do you have the rear view of?
I have a photo of the amount of this.
That'll work?
Okay.
You're concerned about, like, the view? I'm concerned, not so much the view, but how much it's going to protrude in the back? And how will that impact deliveries to adjoining buildings?
Okay.
You know, the distributors are gonna park their trucks wherever they can park it and dolly it up.
Yeah, but where that, that white thing is, is where the, the back of the building ends now. And you're proposing that it's gonna come out even farther. So what's to the left, which is now the Mediterranean, as you call it?
Yeah.
Um, how is that going to impact, either positively or negatively? How will that impact their parking and access, delivery access to theirs? I mean, you know...
It's not an impact, no, they're a fence. I mean, you're talking about the neck up? It's not gonna impact them. It's a fence. I mean, you're talking about, um, the neck up?
No, this, the left.
No, this, yeah. Mediterranean and then Bistro.
Yeah, okay, so we wanna look at that.
I don't think it's gonna affect it.
I mean, I've, I've parked my truck where, exactly where we build and the guy that's parked right here is, could get out easily. You know, I've been there where they're making deliveries. They don't come anywhere near me. There's stuff, they're always behind their own building.
Yeah, this is, this is, um, showing basically, it was off the old scheme, but it shows the back of the building. You can see the car parked there. He's actually, while I miss his.
Yeah, my property line, it's, it's kind of iffy that between the alleyway, like my build, my parking line is at the edge of the, uh, edge of my building coming out to like the sewer cap. So it comes out at angle and wherever like that last part is parked on right is basically partially parked on my property.
Right. Um, also, you can see the spots here. If we, if we go back to last theme, you can park it this way. But you can't, I mean, we're already there with these spots, um, which is, you know, so.
Well, is that parking that you have doable?
Yeah, yeah, this one?
Yeah, well, that one and.
That's, that's theirs.
I, I know it's existing, but if, if I'm parked where, to the, to the, right on the corner of the building.
Right.
Of your adjoiner.
Right.
And then someone else is parked ninety degrees facing Route thirty-two, um, you know, that starts to get kind of tight.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna have to look and maybe if we go look at the drawings from, you know, Mediterranean's, but we can see where their parking spots are. Cause they could be certain parking spots.
Yeah, they might have to add their.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a lot there, I don't know what this is, but this was on the last proposal. I don't know if you can see this, but. There, they had a spot this way, which was ramming.
Oh, with a diner?
Like that. And there were two spots shown here, which are just against the building. That was it. So that was, yeah, I don't know. This doesn't exist like this stuff, so I don't know. Maybe it did at that time. That was very strange. They were, they were coming on your property with a parking and then it curved, so I'm not sure what that was. This, I experienced it more like, like this, uh, yeah, but that's a good point, so we'll.
How much of the basement is above grade?
Uh, half of it. I mean, I'm sorry, the back, the back design really slopes up. You know, it's kind of one of those zero to.
Well, I feel like there's the alleyway and then you get towards Main Street and there's stairs. So I would say like those stairs are like ten feet, like from, from Main Street, ten feet back and then it's all like about, I'd say about four to five feet.
So when you do the addition, is it gonna increase the basement size?
Uh, it does slightly, yes.
Yeah, I'm more above grade.
Uh, hold on, hold on, wait, actually, I'm wrong about that. No. The basement, uh, it's what, it's the footprint of the addition now, except these stairs would come down. But they also came down, you know, you have, I mean, the other ones, so it's, the other ones.
So at the basement level, that's open?
Uh, the basement level that's closed is the same as it is now, the footprint. Uh, except for these fire stairs required, um, and then it's open beyond that, so, yeah.
There's kind of a lot of what they were saying, the basement was closed and they had an open space back.
More than fifty percent of the basement is above grade.
Yeah.
They're tilted.
Uh, I would say, yeah, because this stair drops to basement level already, so this hole is on grade.
Well, I, no, my basement, like.
Is your limit a few steps down?
Oh, my, before this basement is five feet above the back, the alleyway.
Before the basement?
Before basement is five feet below the alleyway.
Below the alleyway, okay, so that's, um, yeah.
Below the alleyway.
Yeah, okay.
But it does, you do walk out the back, you know?
Yeah, the stairs, the stairs down, the stairs you go down and then there's a door.
Oh, okay. So the door's at grade, you walk down a flight of stairs and then you're.
Three steps.
Yeah, three steps down, four steps.
And then you're on the basement floor?
Yeah.
So it's all below grade?
We could, we're changing it.
It has to be more than fifty percent below grade or it cannot be a story.
Right.
This would be a four-story building, although it's.
I mean, I could dig down and just lower it.
No, you don't need to. You said you're four or five foot below the alleyway, a hundred percent below, I mean.
Well, you're just gonna have to demonstrate that.
Yeah, 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 okay, yeah.
About this?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, any other questions or? Just one other thing that Bill Inspector mentioned that you could corroborate. And the decision to have an apartment on the top floor, um, and the size of the lot, he said requires that you go for a, a various plan?
Yeah, mixed, well, it's a mixed use, it's presently business use. Right, it's not the size, it's just a change.
It is a density.
It's a density issue.
Oh, density as well, okay.
Yeah, I'm. Yeah, no, I don't think it's, I mean, mixed use is certainly allowed to be considered and encouraged. But, but it is a density issue because it's a lot that's well under five thousand square feet.
Right, okay, that's right. Be under five thousand square feet.
Or fifty-five feet or whatever.
Yeah, so we're undersized or.
So I mean, that's something we can't approve, but we will, how would, sorry. But you go through the ZBA and the Sbar recommendation?
So do you mind, then do you lead or you guys could lead? How do you want? I mean, where do we start, did you say?
Well, we, we would run it easily so we could do a secret.
Okay, good. So then you'll send us there or we could do it in parallel?
I think we can do it at the same time.
Okay.
And then when, when ZBA gets it, um, they'll ask for our recommendation. And whatever plans you submit and help us give a good recommendation, we can do that.
Okay.
Knowing what you're doing at all times is a good thing.
Yes.
So whatever.
We'll get it.
Keep it open, keep it open, last time, please.
Okay.
Cause we do wanna get this through the process, whether it's up or down, quickly so that you don't waste your time or money in the process.
What, what's your timeline on this?
Timeline ASAP?
So it's like twenty to eight now, so.
Um, I heard you, the planning board means I, 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 I heard this, I need to meet three or four times with you guys.
I don't know. It depends on the project. It depends how prepared you are at each meeting, how complete the application is. Um, our meetings are generally every two weeks, sometimes three weeks. Um, this is on a, uh, on a state road. Yes, so we'll have to go to the county for their review. That adds a month, technically.
Could be in parallel, kind of, please.
No, it can't be.
I mean, demo, I mean, if I, if I demo the building, it'll take me a week to demo.
Right.
Then, foundation work, two weeks, steel work, no, I, it's just, it's not a huge building. I could do steel work in a week, a week and a half. You know, and then.
Nothing happens this fast in the process, all right.
It's, I, the actual, the actual labor, I'm, I'm estimating is gonna take about six to eight months. That's the labor and, or approvals I need.
Alright.
So you're looking at a year then?
Yes.
I do have, uh, one more question. Um, I see on, on the present building code that, um, the maximum height is three stories or thirty-five feet. Can you do your three stories within that?
That's why the grade, that's why the grade in the.
Fifty percent.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Good time.
Good luck.
Good luck, yeah.
Good luck. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good time.
Good to see you.
Thank you. And thanks for showering.
Are you home? I didn't shower. I said, with the other.
I'm sorry, okay. It's more than most activities.
Hey, you're saying.
More than I, I do. Okay. We have draft minutes from April Fool's Day meeting. Which minutes are, is there any jokes in here, Robert?
I didn't put them in there.
Except for Richie being there twice.
Yeah.
You, you made quite an impression, I believe.
Did I, yeah?
Yeah, you're there twice, that's good. Okay, does anybody have any, um, questions or corrections for the draft minutes for April first, two thousand fourteen meeting?
I don't.
Mr. Zerler, Mr. I don't know. Mr. Letton?
None, none.
And in that motion, in that case, I need a, may I have a motion to accept the draft minutes for the April first, two thousand fourteen meeting? Oh, come on, don't be bashful. Thanks, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Everybody's bashful today. Thank you, Liz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you hear me say that?
Yeah.
Thank you, I did.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes, minutes are accepted. May I please have a motion to adjourn? That one comes back.
Seven.
Thank you, John. All in favor? Is there any discussion?
Aye.
Any discussion about adjourn? All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Thank you.